Good evening. I'd like to call this evening's meeting of the Westerville Board of Education to order and ask the Treasurer to please call the roll.
Mr. Byrd?
Here.
Mrs. Davidson?
Here.
Dr. French?
Here.
Mr. Velardo?
Here.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Here, thank you. Would you all please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Moving on to a very important piece of our meeting tonight, which is under District Highlights and Recognitions, this is the 2014 Summer Graduation. And before we can graduate these individuals, we need to have the Board approve or consider the approval of the candidates for graduation from Westerville Central, Westerville North, and Westerville South who have completed all local and state requirements. Could I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. With a motion and a second, we are ready to consider that approval before we have you make the comments. Would you like to do it that way? Then let's call the roll on the approval and then we will have Mr. Reeves discuss the candidates.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Byrd?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. French?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes, you've been approved. Mr. Reeves?
Thank you, President Nestor Baker. This is always a great day for me and all educators because this is the culmination of everything we work for from the time students enter preschool and kindergarten and matriculate through elementary and middle and high school for this grand event, which is called commencement for a reason because it's really the start of the rest of their lives. And so I'd like to personally congratulate the two of you and publicly all of our graduates, not only from the spring, but those who worked hard to secure that graduation this summer. So with that, I'd like to offer a word from each of our high school principals, and I'd like to begin with the Principal of Westerville Central, Mr. Todd Spinner.
Thank you, Mr. Reeves. Board President, Dr. Nestor Baker, Vice President, Mrs. Davidson, and members of the Board, Dr. Kellogg, Central Office members, Westerville staff, family, friends, and graduates, I want to say congratulations to the graduates seated here this evening on behalf of the entire Westerville Central High School community. Like Mr. Reeves said, this night represents the start of a lifetime of adventure and exploration. Whether it's on a college campus, maybe in the military, the workforce, or perhaps a cross-country hiking adventure through Europe, you have so much to look forward to because you have the diploma in hand. So on behalf of the entire Warhawk Nation, once again, I wish you nothing but the best and I will leave you with a quote from Samuel Clemings, also known as Mark Twain. "Don't go around saying the world owes you a living. The world owes you nothing. It was here first. Go make your mark." Once again, congratulations. Now I'd like to introduce Mr. Anderson, the Principal at Westerville South High School.
Good evening, Board Members and graduates of Westerville North High School who are here with us tonight. I would like to say that this night too, for us, is always very special and is part of a journey. Last spring, when some of our graduates we knew wouldn't make it, immediate plans were put in place to help those kids over the summer, and today we see the fruits of a lot of those labors. Westerville South has three summer graduates. They weren't with us tonight. They are Jonathan, better known as JJ, Pierre, Danielle Steele, and Kane Walmouth, and to them I give my congratulations. Thank you.
My name is Kirk Yancey and the Principal of Westerville North High School. It's my pleasure to be able to publicly say congratulations to all of our graduates tonight and to wish you luck in all that you do. On behalf of the entire Westerville North High School learning community and all the other district employees who have affected your life, please accept our congratulations for your accomplishment, for your accomplishment. We are all very proud of the Westerville Central Warhawks, the Westerville North Warriors, and the Westerville South Wildcats who are becoming alumni this evening. We encourage you to always push yourself to keep moving forward regardless of the obstacles you may face, just as you have persevered to make it here tonight. We wish you the best of luck in the future, and now it is my pleasure to turn the program back over, I think, to Dr. Kellogg.
My part in this. President Nestor Baker, members of the Board of Education, distinguished former and current faculty and staff, honored guests, and proud families of the graduates of Central, North, and South High Schools. The State of Ohio establishes in law two requirements for earning a high school diploma: the successful completion of a rigorous academic curriculum, proficient competencies in five disciplines that compromise the Ohio graduation test. Ladies and gentlemen seated before you in caps and gowns are the young men and women who have now satisfied those requirements. Administration of Westerville City Schools has verified the Board of Education will act on their candidacy for graduation, and so does with great pleasure Superintendent of Westerville City Schools that I confer to each student of the class of 2014 of Westerville City Schools State of Ohio Diploma of Completion. And what I'd like to do at this time, I know Mr. Anderson had an opportunity to introduce his graduates who couldn't be here, I'd like to give Mr. Spinner the same opportunity and then ask Mr. Yancey to introduce his graduates, and we'll come forward when Mr. Yancey does to greet them and give them their diploma.
I think that's fine. I'd also like to make sure that ordinarily, at the graduation now, at the end of the school year, we approve the graduates a couple of weeks before, and at graduation, the Board President accepts the class. Well, we're here tonight, and we're all sitting right here together, and I would like to give each Board Member the chance to say yes, they accept the class, if that's all right with you.
Fine by me.
Now that you've presented them, I accept the class, and I'm delighted to do so, and I'm so looking forward to everything that you're going to do next. Who wants to accept next?
Absolutely, yes.
And I also accept them, and I appreciate the, it looks like two of them that showed up tonight. It's wonderful to see you, and thank you, and congratulations.
Absolutely, accept both of you into this class and excited to hear from you over the next couple of years about the direction that you're taking and the stories that you will be creating. I'm excited for both of you, all of you.
So absolutely, wholeheartedly, yes. Very excited for you, shared with you before, I am the father of 2004 Westerville North High School Summer Graduate, and this is a very exciting time for you, and we're very proud of you and the rest of the graduates as well.
Mr. Spinner, if you'd like to present your graduates, and then we'll turn to Mr. Yancey.
Absolutely, thank you very much. Daniel Testigusa could not make it this evening. He was on again, off again, and then today called in, and his family was not able to be here, and he wanted to make sure he graduated in front of his family, so he called in with a heavy heart and said he would not be in attendance this evening. But I know that we're all very, very proud of him, and these two graduates here represent all of the summer graduates, so on behalf of Daniel, thank you for accepting him, and I'll make sure that he gets this diploma tomorrow. Thank you.
First, I'd like to take an opportunity to recognize Morgan Anne Blumling. Morgan is not able to be with us this evening, but she's actually an early grad from high school, so congratulations to her. And then our first graduate this evening, Abdulhamid Mohammed Abdullah.
us tonight. If you'd like to stay for the rest of the meeting, we would love to have you, but at this point, you are excused, and you are also our newest, most wonderful graduates. Congratulations to you once again. Would you like to, before you leave, in front of us, flip your tassels? Take your tassel and put it on the other side of your hat? Hey! Mr. Velardo says if you want to throw your hat, it's okay. Just don't aim at anybody. Thank you very much for being here. Congratulations to all. I also was a summer graduate. Mm-hmm, early graduate. So was my guy. They were saying, "You want out? Sure." All right, we will move on in the agenda. Item four, Board Meeting Minutes. This is discussion and approval of the August 11th, 2014 Board Meeting Minutes, and we don't have a formal motion and vote on approval of these. This is done by consensus, and if anyone has any comments, corrections, thoughts about the minutes, speak now. I hear none, and I see a lot of heads shaking, so we will move on. Under Reports this evening, we have a summer construction update, and Jeff LaRose is coming to the podium now, and I'm assuming that you are the one that will do the presentation.
I am the one, yes. Thank you, Members of the Board. See if I can get this to work. Excellent. So this evening, what I'd like to review is how the capital improvement plan links to the strategic plan, review of our schedule, compliance, the status of some of the properties that we disposed, property disposition. I'd like to do a photo walk that shares some of our curb appeal of the buildings as we went into the start of the school year, as well as some before and after photos of the construction projects, end with budget compliance for FY15 as well as how we are doing against the five-year plan to date, and then end with the audit process that is used for the capital plan. So linking it to the strategic plan, this all falls under strategic dimension number two, learning and working environments that are safe, nurturing, and efficient. And from all the work that we did with the community, we developed two objectives that fall under the dimension number two. Objective one is to protect human health and preserve our natural resources, and objective two is to preserve the district's infrastructure and ensure accessibility while creating inspiring environments that enhance learning. And we actually have two programs that work in harmony under objective number two. First, the preventive maintenance plan, which is designed to maximize the life of our building components, the buildings and the equipment. And then the capital improvement plan is used to replace those components after its useful life has expired. And then some of the ways that we're measuring that is obviously schedule and budget compliance, customer satisfaction, and then our goal is that we do not have lost instruction time because of a failure of any of the buildings, roofing, HVAC equipment, and so on. This is just to show the typical project cycle that this demonstrates that it's never-ending. If you look down at the bottom, August, we started August with our final cleaning, keeping in mind the teachers returned on the 11th and students returned on the 13th. So we had scheduled one week for cleaning, but the big one is that occupancy permit because that's what gives us the right to open schools on time. And then currently for August, we are developing the punch list against the work that was completed. September is giving the contractors the opportunity to complete that project. Our goal is to get those projects closed out. We give them 30 days after substantial completion, substantial completion being it's finished at a state where it's for its intended use. And then in October is where we start to develop that scope of work for FY16 or the summer of FY15, or summer of 2015. November, we're starting our schematic design of those projects, as well as working with the Building Department and the Zoning Department for their review. And December is when we like to put those construction documents together, and this is what's actually used to bid the projects. January, so we have everything ready. At the break, coming back from winter break, is when we like to advertise, bid, and do our post-bid interviews, and typically what we're bringing to the Board in February is approval of those projects, anything over $25,000. In March, so we've awarded the contracts in February, March is when we're working on scheduling and working with those municipalities to get the building permits. April is when we are requesting, which is built in our bid documents, we want to see, through the submittal process, we want to see the materials that they're using, that they're going to be constructing on the job site, to making sure that they are in compliance with our bid documents. May is material procurement and site mobilization, so the day the kids get out of school is when we mobilize, and then you look at June and July, that's when it all happens. So we've got, we have the construction as well as the inspections. These are some of our schedule challenges. As you know, per Ohio Revised Code, anything over $25,000 is publicly bid, and we are typically bringing you the lowest bidder of the public bid process. Many times, they've missed something in the bid. So our job is to manage that process, making sure that it's completed on time. The construction timeframe, very aggressive. We allow 10 weeks for the construction, and then again, we have one week for cleaning. And that's all working around the summer school activities, summer intervention, OGT testing. Weather is a consideration for the exterior projects such as roofing, building envelope, paving, and then during construction, there's change requests. And renovation work, which is the bulk of what we're doing, it's not new build, renovation is typically more challenging because you're getting into unforeseen conditions that you really don't know what those conditions are until you do the demo work. And then the approval of the multiple inspections that occur during this process. For example, the approval is prior to construction. It all starts with community approval. So this current five-year plan was achieved in May of 2009. I'm proud to say that it is the highest voted levy since 1973. So we do appreciate the Board's support of the program. Again, as you know, anything over $25,000 comes to the Board for approval. Then we have the municipality approvals. There's the Building and Department, who typically will send our packages out to a Plans Examiner. They allow them up to 30 days to review those plans and get them back with notes for us to make corrections to. It goes through the Planning and Zoning Department, and there are times where we have to present these projects to the Planning Commission. Projects that are on the outside of Emerson and Hanby go to the Uptown Review Board, so projects like building envelope, windows, doors are in front of them for approval. And then occasionally, we deal with the Board of Appeals. More recently, we dealt at the local level, the Board of Appeals, with the Fab Lab, getting the temporary occupancy for the Fab Lab. These are some examples of the construction inspections that we go through on the process, and depending on the complexity of the job, it can be up to 14 different inspections required by the municipalities, and they typically don't pass the first time out. They're typically writing something up, come back, make sure that the contractor has corrected those, but again, these are all things that inhibit our abilities to get them done on time, but it does happen. So it's really working in harmony with the contractor, with the design team, and with municipalities to make this all happen in that 10-week period. I have this up here because it's just an example of, from a scheduling standpoint, and our goal was to have this ready for the start of the preschoolers coming back, and that did happen, but it was about three months to get the approvals with something as simple as a plastic laminate sign, but the feedback has been very positive. In fact, one parent said it was very kid-friendly, so we do appreciate that. In terms of property disposition, this is just a view from Transportation, looking at the two properties that we sold, the more commonly known as the White House and the Yellow House, and you can see in the background what was the Yellow House. They did a fantastic job with the renovation. It's new roof, new gutters, new windows, new siding, and inside, I did a tour with the new owner. It even has granite countertops, so it's a, they did a great job, and it's rented out. They're currently working on the White House. They have put a full-service bathroom. They're working on another bathroom as part of a master bedroom suite. And then I don't know if you've noticed, in the back of the building, they've got the pavers that they're getting ready to put a paver driveway in, so they're getting close to getting that permit approval to place the carriage house in the back with pavers from Walnut Street going back, but they've actually done a wonderful job with the properties. This is just a view of Longfellow, I'm sorry, Central College from Sunbury, and the reason I'm sharing this photo is we're working in partnership with the Child Council of Franklin County for the Head Start Program. It's a preschool program. We're getting close of getting the approvals from that group, and we're hoping to present that at the next Board meeting. What they're looking to do, this is a floor plan, but if you look at the upper-left section on the main level, there are two classrooms in blue on the left side of the screen. Those are the two rooms that they're going to be using for the preschool. There'll be an AM and a PM, as well as what's in red is the office area. So again, we're going to finalize that and get it to you at the next Board meeting. This is just, this is a photo of an example of some of the building envelope work that we're doing. This represents Hanby. Seems like we're working on Hanby continuously. In this current five-year plan, last year, we replaced the windows. The year prior, you can see the, some of the brick changes in coloration above the windows. We replaced the lenals. We've replaced the stone coping last year above the windows on the second floor, and you can see some of the work that we're doing this year that was completed is replacing some of those cornerstones that are at risk of failure. So again, this is continually monitored and continually repaired based on recommendations from our inspections, and this is just one. We do all the buildings the same way. This is the wall in front of Transportation. It was actually called out, and I will share, Mrs. Duffy called this out to us, that it was in need of repair, and it was a bit of a challenge because it was like a jigsaw puzzle trying to put that thing back together, but it actually, it worked out well. One of the staples to the program is the paving. We don't do much in the way of total replacement. It's more of evaluating after the winter season, looking at the potholes, and then replacing as needed. This year, as part of the paving program, we also replaced the track at Westerville Central. So this was not replacing the asphalt, but replacing the rubber and then re-striping. This is one of the four pads for the Fab Lab. This is at Genoa Middle School. So you see the curb cut with the additional paving for the lab, and in the background there, you can see where there's the pole that the electric plug is for the, to power the unit. We're getting close, and thank you, Mr. Byrd, for helping with the city. We're getting close to get approvals for the remaining three middle schools, but at least we have one site where we can start. This is the actual unit that we are to receive September 5th. So once that arrives, it's, if so, if Curriculum decides we can start that operation at Genoa. This is from Walnut Street, looking at Mark Twain. As you know, some activity with the recreational pathway that the city put in. We weren't exactly ready for the start of school, so we did supplement busing for those that weren't able to walk, that would typically walk to school, but it was operational for the second week of school. This is one of three roofing projects. Again, this is Mark Twain, but we did a majority of Mark Twain, less the building addition in 2002. We did a similar roofing project at Robert Frost, and also Hanby this year, this summer. The entryway going into Hawthorne. And this particular project, a couple of things. We did, we finished Phase Three of the lighting work, so district-wide, we now have the T8s, the more energy-efficient fluorescent lights versus the T12s. We've replaced the halogen lamps that were in the gymnasiums with the T8s that you can see here, but the reason I'm sharing this photo is it was a project that we didn't originally have earmarked. Last year, it was discovered that the two ducts that are, were actually underground feeding into the gymnasium. One of those was filling with water. So we had that inspected by an environmental engineer. We decided that it's best to shut, just to close the one duct off. The other one was deemed safe, so we were heating the space with the one duct, but it was basically an emergency bid package to run the ductwork above ground. So the two lines you see in the silver there, those are the two additional lines that were underground. We rerouted those above ground. Street view of South High School. A journey that the students, so one of the journeys the students would use to enter the building. And again, I'm just sharing this because we took a more aggressive approach with our landscaping. We've aggressive weeding, edging, pruning, mulching, and again, a lot of favorable comments coming back from staff and community. At South, this was the music room renovation, so it was three practice rooms that were converted into one larger room for orchestra. You can see the sound panel is used to control acoustics. This is one of five curtain walls that were replaced at South High School. This is actually the wall that's facing Blenden. And this is just sharing how we went about constructing the new wall. So the first thing is we had to provide security when we removed the skin of the building, so we put the particle board wall in that's four feet back. It provided a safe zone for the abatement contractor because the glazing compound was determined to have asbestos, so there was a licensed contractor to do the window removal, and then we had the window contractor come back to do the actual steel work, but you can see we're working around the unit vents, so the heating and cooling system in the buildings, in the classrooms. This was a rendering of what it was to look like, and this is one of the progress photos. So we were complete to get occupancy. We did have to go to a contingency plan because you see, there's two off-colored windows in each of the classrooms. Those are to be operable windows that did not arrive. So working with the city, they did approve us going with a single-pane tempered glass in lieu of having the operable windows. glass in lieu of having the operable windows. And also, there's the temporary louvers in there for those unit ventilators. So it's not the final look. It hasn't been addressed and finished with the aluminum trim as well. But it gives you a general idea of what that's going to look like as a finished product. And then I did want to plug the National Honor Society at South for their generous donation toward that graphic. It's been exciting to really, to stand there and watch the students go by and the comments associated with the graphic. We had five locker projects this summer. Walnut Springs, Blendon, Heritage, North and South. This is just sharing the condition. On the left, it was some of the lockers that were moved for athletics. On the right, you can see that most of the student lockers were very narrow. They don't, they didn't meet the needs of today's student with those backpacks. And two, you can see that those, the lockers had been painted. So there's been a lot of repair work, numerous paint jobs. This is just another one that, some additional demolition photos. But again, you can see how narrow those lockers were, as well as the change in paint over time. In fact, as I was looking at the older colors, at all cycles, I was, those are the colors I used downstairs, so. This is one of the hallways at South after the new lockers were installed. Again, you can see that they're double-stacked, but they're wider so that you can get the backpack in. And one of the things that we're currently working on is how we can introduce a little color into that space. So we're hoping to address some of those issues next summer at South High School. This is one of three serveries that were renovated per the request of Food Services. All three were designed to, number one, provide students more options, nutritional options, as well as get them through the line faster. We were hearing complaints that by the time they go through the line, there's not much time to eat. So in this particular photo, I want you, I just want to share that that servery comes out to the transition in the floor. And in the next picture, which is the finished product, the servy was moved back to provide more room for the students. And again, you can see how that shifted back in that, in the floor pattern. And two, introduce some color. So again, more options, and get them through faster. This is a view going into North High School. Again, replaced the lockers. This is a view of Locker Street. If you recall, last year, we replaced the ceiling in a good portion of the building. And then, part of the prior five-year plan, we did a lot of work on the flooring. This was maybe seven years ago. There was a lot of original carpet to that building. That building was in 1975. So, working with staff, it was agreed that we're going to replace the carpet and put in the tile, easier to clean. And two, we were able to pop a little color in the space as well. This is a view of the lockers at Heritage. And the request from the school was, if we could turn those 90 degrees. It used to be, the reason for that is, in the background, is the commons area. So it was requested that as, as you have staff monitoring student activity, they wanted to be able to see through and be able to also monitor the activity between the lockers. So we turned them for staff. This is a view coming into Walnut Springs from the street. This was a gym floor that was refinished over the summer, as well as the change in the lights from the halogen. Working with the ADA Committee, they've been requesting that we convert one restroom or add one restroom that's an ADA-compliant restroom. The goal is to have one in each school. So we're working away at that. Last year, we did one at North. This is Walnut Springs. We actually, this is new. We carved space into the teacher's lounge. New lockers at Blendon. I'm sorry. This is Walnut Springs. This is Blendon. So this is a view driving down Otterbine. This is a view that, as students come into the building. We have a lot of HVAC work to do at Blendon. There are nine of those silver rooftop units you see. That's one of four we replaced over the summer. And we're projecting to replace the balance this coming summer. I'm sharing this photo. I know it's rather dark, but it shows the process under demolition. The soffits, they weren't working out well to reuse those existing soffits. So in the field, working with the contractor, we made a decision to tear those out. And it actually worked out well because it actually feels wider. Well, it makes it feel much more spacious as you walk down those halls. This was the servy at Blendon, the former servy. The new servy was, again, to increase. There wasn't a lot of room behind that wall for processing the students. So this is the bump out. So it extended 14 feet into the, additional feet into the commons area. In the foreground is new equipment, and in the background is the new portion of the serving line. But again, talking last week with Fred Tombaugh, he was telling us that it's done exactly what it was to do. More options, and they are getting through faster. This is from the street coming into Anheuserst. And this was the former kitchen. So you can see the serving line, just some folding tables, not a real defined space for the servy. We created a defined space, as well as replaced the folding tables with a new servy. So again, introducing some color where we can. In terms of budget compliance, this is a slide that I used at the last update in February. So for FY14, we had brought to the board $2.3 million worth of work. Now again, we've done more than that because anything under $25,000 doesn't require coming to the board. But we, in terms of change orders, we had a deduct of 111. That does include $49,000 in rebates that we received from the City of Westerville for the energy programs with lighting and HVAC. So for FY15, we had 11 bid packages that we brought to the board, as well as, we did a couple on state term. State term doesn't require that we come to the board. They've already been bid as part of a state initiative. So roofing and flooring were bid state term. But you can see those projects over 25 totaled $4.9 million in lieu of the 2.2 last year. So it was a busy summer. And I'm projecting that we're going to be about $84,000 under what the board had approved. Again, I will call out that 62,000 of that is what the City of Westerville has approved in terms of energy rebates. To collect, all we need to do is demonstrate that the work is completed. So we're getting ready to file that, and we should be getting the rebate checks soon. So I'm using this slide just to share some benchmarking that we use with the Ohio School Facilities Commission. The Ohio School Facilities Commission recommends budgeting 7% for change orders for renovation work. That drops to 6% if it's new. But I'm using 7% because, again, most of our work is renovation. So given, if you take 7% of the 4.9, that would be $343,000. And again, the actual, to date, is a credit back of $22,000. So there's a cost difference there of 365. I'm adding in the energy rebates. And then, in terms of construction management, the OSFC recommends that you budget 6% for construction management fees. And since I've been here from 2001, we were using construction management as part of the bond issue. That was a challenging time for me. Since then, we've been doing it in-house. So there's a difference there of 294. So this is just cost avoidance for FY15. If you're benchmarking back to Ohio School Facilities Commission, $721,000. And then, for the five-year summary, so going back to what the voters approved, $65 million worth of work. If you recall, the way we financed this program, we agreed to defer a portion of that. So to date, I updated the numbers as of Monday of last week. So the budget deferral would be $7.4 million. Again, the way we chose to finance the project did not allow us to do the entire $65 million worth of work that was identified. To date, the actual project deferral is $2.8 million, meaning we have recovered $4.5 million of that over the past five years. In addition to that, there's additional scope of work that we've performed that wasn't in the original five-year plan. One example of that was the ductwork at Hawthorne that I shared. So over the past five years, the additional work that we've done is $2.3 million. And currently, I'm showing a balance of $1.8 million yet to be assigned. So I'm working on the best way to assign those dollars. But when you add those $3 up in blue, the total added value of the five-year program is $8.6 million. At the last report in February, the total added value was $7.8 million. So you can see the gain that was made over the past year. And in terms of the auditing process, back in December of 2009, the board had requested that the Business Advisory Council to Administrative Services review the facility master plan. A component of the facility master plan is the capital improvements plan. And this is just a statement in the summary report from that, from that evaluation, that the comprehensive nature of Westerville City Schools' facility master plan exists in very few, if any, school districts in Ohio. I remember who made that statement. It was Dick Maxwell, who is a former Ohio superintendent, worked with many, many Ohio schools, and he had shared that he had been involved with numerous facility master plans. So, and Rod Rice was on that committee as well, a former Ohio superintendent. But we felt that that was an honor for that statement to be made. The current five-year plan in October of 2011, the fact committee requested that they review the capital, the capital finances. And we had shared a similar outcome three years into it with how we bid the projects, budget, actual. And this was a statement from their summary report. Rigorous construction management, improved bid procedures, savings on construction contingencies, and overall cost reductions drove the savings. So it was another entity that helped to validate the process that we were using. And then two, every year, the state audits our bid process. It just occurred this month, they basically looked at every bid package that was shared with the board, and they're looking to make sure that we were in compliance with the Ohio Advice Code. So we have a demonstrated history of continuing to maintain compliance with code. So in summary, on time, under budget, safe, nurturing, and efficient. And again, I want to thank the community for their vote of support in allowing us to do what we do. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Before I ask the board for questions, I want to start by asking Richard if there's anything that you would like to add, any comments you would like to make as facilities liaison.
A few. I think that certainly my personal education, working with Jeff throughout the whole summer, from the start, literally when most of the construction projects were just getting underway, all the way through to the end, it's a fascinating process. I think there's a bit of an underestimation at the complexity, what it takes to coordinate, and not just in timelines and scope and management of contingencies in an extremely tight timeframe, but of course, then coordinating with the city for all of the requisite inspections. And then, where we have, you know, projects that obviously overlap, where we've experienced that the last couple of years, just takes a tremendous amount of coordination. And it's very impressive to see. I was really fortunate coming into this board liaison role, having started my own career a number of years ago in construction project management, and being able to hopefully not slow Jeff too much down as we were going from site to site, and not be, you know, a spectator, but be able to provide, you know, good, positive feedback. Some of the projects have been so well-received. I think the feedback that I've gotten from the community, in particular, on just something as simple as the grounds work prior to school start, been overwhelmingly positive. I think that the total community, whether it's in North, South, or Central, the total community response to the Westville-South Wildcat signage has been amazing. People are really, really excited about that. And I think that's a great use of space. I think it's a great use of cooperative dollars from interested parties that wanted to donate it. You just couldn't ask for a better set of outcomes for Westville-South High School for something as simple as, you know, the claw pulling back the curtain wall there. There's opportunities for us to build on all the things that Jeff shared in terms of how we were perceived in 2009. We need to come up on, you know, our next area focus, which is, you know, the next stage of master planning. There's going to be a lot of work that we're going to do there. Obviously, we're going to look for board and community input, as well as input from the schools themselves. So we're moving from kind of the typical every-year, fast-paced of activities into a very important strategic component that is going to take some time and some effort. So I will definitely be looking for a lot of support across each of those stakeholders to be able to provide input. There are a lot of buildings that we need to take a look at. There's a lot of property that we need to be evaluating as a part of this next round. And it's going to take some careful consideration and some very thoughtful planning. So we've got a good, positive foundation to build off of. And I, again, I can't thank you enough for putting up with me throughout the summer. I thoroughly enjoyed it. I'm looking forward to the next round. This is going to be fun. But everything has just turned out extremely well coming through this summer construction season.
I'll answer questions.
I will say, I too am thankful to Mr. LaRose for all of this work. I mean, it's just overwhelming. It almost makes me tired listening. But, but as I had an opportunity, I asked him for a tour and saw many of these things firsthand, Friday, I believe it was. And so, it's been recent, and Tracy went with us on part of it, and it was very, very interesting to see it. And, you know, Jeff, I'm sitting here thinking, gee, was your hair, was your hair black? When we, I first started on the board? I don't know. Don't ask me what mine was. But anyway. But you know what? It is a very difficult process, but I love the fact that you have the steps, month by month. You know what you're going to be doing, and your strong and efficient work time is there in the summer when we've got to get things done. A lot was accomplished, and, you know, the management that took place was amazing. So, and the students, I'm sure, are So, and the students, I'm sure, appreciate it. You've stayed within budget, and that is my liaison concern. So you did that very well. Thank you, and thanks for all you do.
Thank you.
I'd just say some affirmation words as well to you, and I know it's not just to you. I know it's your team. I know you've got good folks around you. And really, Richard, I appreciate you jumping in full bore coming into this, and we thought we'd throw you in the easy thing. And I appreciate some of his background, helping out as well. I'm desperately trying to get some of the Westerville City School District leadership on Twitter and some other avenues. And I'm telling you, you ought to hashtag each one of those phrases. You ought to hashtag on time, hashtag under budget, hashtag safe, nurturing, efficient, because those are not things that often occur at the speed of the projects that you all. And I know it's just not you, and I know you would deflect, and I get that, but you're overseeing it. So that's awesome. Anytime we can go to the community and say, we are doing the best with your dollars. We thank you for trusting us. I appreciate you bookended thanking the community. You thanked them up front, you thanked them behind, and that's critical. But anytime we can go to the community and say, there's some great stuff being done, all tied back to educational purposes, so that it's safe, nurturing, and efficient. Just great stuff.
I would like to echo everything that the board members are saying, and I completely agree. And I want you to know that the kids feel that pride, and they feel it in the hallways, and it's evident, and they're very, very excited. And I think it's going to inspire them. So thank you for everything.
Thank you.
Hashtag expertise matters. It is extremely important to think about what's behind the comments that you were sharing. And as you think about other school districts and the sometimes perplexing way that facilities are allowed to degenerate in other communities, and then you look at Westerville, it isn't for lack of desire in the other communities. In many ways, the difference is that here, we have significant focused expertise to make it happen right. We have that significant focused expertise, and you couple that with what is truly a remarkable amount of support from the community over many years. Multiple renewals, replacements of the five-year capital improvements issue, the permanent improvements issue. That has allowed us to protect all of our taxpayer investments in those buildings, and it also gives us the ability to continue to uphold each of our facilities, no matter what the age of that facility, as a point of pride in the district, so that the kids are happy to be there, the community is happy to drive by and say, there's my school, I helped pay for that, or there's my school, I went to school there. And it matters hugely. It matters to education, it matters to wallets, and it matters to expertise. Thank you very much for all that you have done with that. Thank you, Dr. Kellogg, for your support of that position and the way that continues to move forward. And I'm looking forward to what we're going to do with the next round.
Excellent.
And I love the mulch.
Thank you.
Beasley pleased. I love the mulch. And Peg, you were right. That wall really needed put back together.
And just let me emphasize what was already said, that Mr. LaRose does need some direction from the board for the next step. So we need to get together and make some decisions for the future.
That's coming.
Thanks so much.
I do have one quick question. The information sign outside of South, where are we at with that? Is it coming back?
It's another one that we're going to ask Mr. Byrd to help us with.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I won't make any bones about it. I've taken that particular item on as a personal pet project. And I've had discussions with the city. I believe we're probably to a point where we're going to be able to put some conceptual drawings together from an architectural standpoint, get those presented. I'm researching some technologies just so that we can navigate some of the problems that we have. I think it's important to know that one of the issues that we have related to digital, particularly animated signage, is how that's classified in the signage requirements for the city. It's a much more commercial type of signage, and it would put us into a little bit different situation for some spot zoning there, which is probably not the ideal solution. I think that the ideal solution is working to a compromise and agreement with the city, which is what I and Jeff are both working on, to come up with a good win-win solution for both the city and Westerville South. A lot of receptivity to the initial concepts, which is, we would like to make an attempt to tie the signage, the new sign, into the Westerville Gateway Project, capitalize on all of the work that's gone in to create the identity in the southern portion of the city as an entryway, and to make that a part of Westerville South's image as well. A lot of people very, very excited about that. We've just got to start working on the nuts and bolts of it. So unfortunately, the sign's not there for the start of school, but I do think that we'll come up with a good, like I said, win-win solution for the city, for Westerville South, and for the community.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Item six on the agenda, public comments pertaining to action items. Public comment at this point in the agenda is devoted specifically to items that are on the agenda for action. No one has signed up, so we will move on to item seven. Item 7.01 is resolution to approve the financial reports and investments for July 2014. And please note that the financial report lists all funds for July 2014. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you. Could I have a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. And Carol, I will ask you as financial liaison after Bart presents his information to share any comments you may have.
Okay. Madam President, members of the board, as you notice, my voice is failing a little bit, so I will do the best I can. Year-to-date receipts are for July 31st, which is the first month of fiscal year '15. Year-to-date receipts is $42,695,000. You probably wonder why we receive so much in a month. Taxes are pretty much collected usually at biggest time twice a year, so July is one of the bigger months. So that's why you'll see the majority of receipts collected in July, sometimes August. Year-to-date expenditures for the month of July was $10,236,000. Unencumbered balance is combined with the ending balance of fiscal year '14. We have $66,549,000 as unencumbered balance. Year-to-date receipts, all funds, we received the month of July was $49,996,000. Year-to-date expenditures as total for all funds was $14,480,000. Gives us an unencumbered fund balance of $86,531,000. And that's it.
Thank you. Anything you'd like to add?
No, not really. I always look at the, I'm sorry. I look at the interest here, and I don't know if any of you ever even look at that, but I've always seen in past years or months, the Huntington Bank has been our most, you know, generous in terms of interest. You'll notice that we don't even have interest from them anymore. So Mr. Griffith has been well-looking at things and doing the best for the district in terms of moving our money around and getting the best interest at other locations. We appreciate all of that work. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Carol. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. Bart, would you call the roll?
Dr. French?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Byrd?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes. The financial reports and investments for July 2014 have been approved. And we move on to item eight, which is the Personnel Consent Agenda for August 25th. And could I have a motion on the consent agenda, please?
So moved.
Thank you. Could I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. With a motion and a second, Dr. Kellogg?
It's my pleasure to introduce, many of you have met already, Mr. Gary Smetzer, who's here as interim executive director for Human Resources. Mr. Smetzer is a longtime educator, has been a superintendent. He was assistant superintendent for Human Resources in southwestern city schools. Made the mistake of hiring me twice. But we welcome him to step into this position, and he's gotten right in and moving things along. So it's our pleasure, seeing the community gets a chance to see him. And so the agenda is yours, Mr. Smetzer.
Excuse me. You've hired him twice?
Yes, and I got to tell you, I probably would have made that same mistake three or four times. You know, I tried to recruit him several times, and I got turned down. But finally, it worked out. So I would just like to draw your attention to several items on the consent agenda for personnel tonight. Under resignations, we have three classified staff members listed there and four licensed staff members, which pertain to supplemental contracts only. Under change of assignment, there are 10 classified staff members listed there for your consideration. Under leave of absence, there's one licensed staff member. Under contractual status change, there are licensed staff members, there are five supplementals listed there, and two classified pupil activity permits. And one-time payments, most of these pertain to job functions, training. I would also mention under this project Lead the Way, there are 14 teachers, and Reynoldsburg City Schools is the fiscal agent. So there's billing back and forth from Westerville to Reynoldsburg. They pay the bill back to us at some point in the future. Also, new teacher orientation, there were 63 teachers that participated that day. And to finalize that section of the board agenda, there are employments of classified staff members and also employments of classified substitutes.
Want to answer questions?
Questions?
Just a question specifically about a classified resignation. I know in particular in the high schools, by design, we run lean with custodial staff, especially with the start of school. How quickly are we looking to close our gap there from a posting and hiring standpoint at South?
Post that right away, and would be the intention to fill it right away. I would guess it's filled with a substitute at the present time, so forth.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, any other questions this evening? Hearing none. Bart?
Dr. French?
Yes.
Mr. Byrd?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes, the Personnel Consent Agenda has been approved this evening.
Thank you.
Policy consent, thank you very much. See you again at the podium soon. Policy consent, number nine, we have nothing on our agenda. Number 10, old business, nothing on the agenda this evening. 11, new business, nothing on the agenda this evening. 12, standing business, we have donations this evening. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you. Sorry. I have double motions.
No, I'll second. I'll be the second.
You'll second?
Yeah, sure.
So Rick's being gentlemanly, and we have a motion and a second. Are there comments or questions about the donations this evening?
I'm just very excited to see the Westerville Noon Club. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Rick, that's the Westerville Sunrise Road Foundation. Very excited. No, I would like to thank, as we always should remember to do, all of our members of our community, and parents and families that contribute consistently to the school district. It is always amazing to see, you know, folks exercising their passion with their treasures and their time. So just, I'm always very, very happy to see these coming up on our agenda.
That was dueling Rotarians there, is what that was about.
That just means we will take money from anywhere, and we are, no. I'm very grateful to the morning club and to all the, really, all kidding aside, when this shows up on our agenda, this really overwhelms us each time, doesn't it? I mean, this is really special, that you all in the community do this, partly because I know that there are hundreds of hours of volunteering way behind this. So, yeah, we tease about some of this. This is huge. Thank you, really.
Bart?
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Byrd?
Yes.
Dr. French?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes, the donations have been gratefully approved. Item 13, public comments, the second portion of public comments for items for the good of the order, as we say. And we have no one signed up to speak this evening. So we'll move on to board comments, which hopefully are also for the good of the order. Any board members want to make any comments?
Just briefly, I want to emphasize again, I know that we spent quite a bit of time going through the construction projects, but there are a lot of acknowledgements that really are deserved. Again, visiting these projects, spending time, we have a lot of contractors involved. We have a lot of coordination with the school staff during the summer, and the level of teamwork to get through this amount of work is just amazing. So I know that we spent quite a bit of time talking about Jeff's direct guidance and leadership in this space, but wow, there are just so many people that are really owed a debt of gratitude to have those doors open for our students, and to do it in such a short amount of time. So, so much fun to get through this summer, really excited about the school year starting, glad the kids are back in school, and it's fun hearing from both students and family members, you know, about their experiences with a lot of the new things that we have out there. So just really, again, appreciative for everyone's involvement in getting these projects to closure.
Other comments?
Yeah, just a quick dovetail on that. I loved the phrase that was up on the board earlier, the comprehensive nature of the Westerville City Schools' Facility Master Plan exists in few, if any, school districts in Ohio. That's, and Nancy, I think you pointed this out well, that takes some significant expertise and leadership to draw that out. So we've talked about that enough, just kudos all the way down the line. Just a really quick congratulations to the graduates again. I mean, that's what we're here for. That's just wonderful, and in my liaison role in the curriculum piece, the thing that I've had my ear open, I've enjoyed like a lot of the comments about the buildings and the grounds and all of that, I kind of had my ear open to several schools and some of the new things that we're doing, curriculum, instructional, and I've heard some exceedingly positive comments about some of the new pathways, put it that way, some of the new pathways that have been created. So that's a big thank you, really, also to the community for supporting that, but to the teachers and staff that are laying it out there, and to the students that are seizing that opportunity. So that's kind of where I've had my ear, and I've just heard some really good comments, some feedback there. So thank you.
Pass.
Pass.
All right. I don't have much to say. I would point out in the Stay Tuned category that we will be talking again about our permanent improvements and what those projects are going to be and what those dollars are going to look like as we move toward the next year, because all of that work that takes place in the summer actually has to be front-loaded many months in advance, as Jeff showed. Also, I think that you probably noticed in the slideshow that Jeff presented this evening, Central College, and the utilization of that site, continuing to use that site as an educational site, which is an important piece for us to do as a district, to maintain that site so that we can maintain it as our own. And we will be looking at how CDC, Child Development Council, moves forward with the Head Start Program there to improve and increase the pre-K offerings within this particular community in this district, as we continue to pursue that pre-K through 12 alignment piece that is extraordinarily important. If we don't have children prepared as they're coming into our school system, those children are at a disadvantage, and it's often difficult to close the gap as we move forward. So it's an important piece, and you'll hear more about that, as I say, in the Stay Tuned Dates, times, and locations of next meetings. We will meet in regular session on September 8th and September 22nd at 6:00 at the Early Learning Center with the child-friendly sign out front. Could I? Could I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. Bart, would you call the roll?
Mr. Byrd?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. French?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes, we are adjourned.